I'm going to call the fourth session to order. Just a reminder that we do have our resume meeting immediately after this. So I'll probably look to wrap this up at about 5:50 just for some transition time for directors. And on that note, I will turn it over to Matt Kent or Chase.
Yeah, so I'll just open it real quick here and see if Chase has anything to add. But we wanted to visit with you tonight a little bit about FMP 2.0. And as we know, that's an ongoing process for us. And we have updates and some ideas and some things that you've probably seen removed from the plan that we had in the past. We've talked a lot about our enrollment and what our numbers are looking like. And so some of the need for additional schools obviously has changed. And so there's other things that that might allow us to have some flexibility to do. We do have Adam also here from a financing perspective. You may have questions about that, about how we're paying for this or how we might pay for it into the future. And so he'll be here ready to answer those questions. But we wanted Dwayne to connect, provide an overview about what's going on and then what some of those potential placeholders that we have in there for future projects might look like and also have a chance to respond to your questions. So Chase, anything you have before we want to steal your...
Yeah.
Okay. So Dwayne, it's yours, so you heard Ruthina. 5:50, so it's 25 minutes.
She was here early to tell me that before you even got here. So actually, I've been calling this 2.2 because it's the second major revision, the 2.0. But I did put it on there, but you will see it on that spreadsheet. So just real quick, we completed a bunch of projects in 2.0 already. You know, the tennis courts, Corvill Central, the parking lots that we did at all three middle schools. Garner Elementary is a new cafeteria expansion, new entrance, new administrative offices, Weber Security Entrance, offices. And at Weber, Wickham and Lemmy were doing HVAC projects as we speak that are moving on. And Jeff and I had a discussion with Lemmy's one of the oldest, not maybe the ELP, but one of the oldest HVAC geothermals that we had. So I don't know if Eliza can attest to that, but it needed to be replaced. So those are on, those are ones we're going right now this summer. I threw these in because these are really cool. And if you haven't looked at them yet, and compliments to Ben Grimm sitting behind me back here and his team. But we're doing these outdoor classrooms at all these different locations. And I threw them in because they're just, they're beautiful pictures. Then some of them are not done. They still need gazebos or they need tables or things like that. I think the high school carpentry classes have been doing some of this work actually. But Wickham's pretty. This one is Liberty. And you said it looks even better than that now?
It does, yeah, yeah.
And then we have, of course, Crookwood, Longfellow, and that's a beautiful setting anyway. And the CFI, that hillside there was pretty rough. And where that is, is where you, when you're in that kind of lounge area at the front of the building and looking out towards the ACT campus. So it's a beautiful area. So projects that are ongoing that we're going to have completed this summer, Horn Elementary. The preschool's done. It looks pretty good. So it's ready to go. We're finishing up the classrooms and the new cafeteria expansion. I've got a picture to show you here and say, but I put it in for a different reason. But so that's moving along really well. West High, they're working on the new entrance, that new secured entrance, you know, that needed to have. We're working on the administrative offices. Those are going to be ready for fall. The front entrance looks great. I didn't throw a lot of pictures in, I just threw in a teaser. But it's looking pretty good. We're working on the music and orchestra rooms as we, as we speak. Basically, we gutted them and took out the concrete floor risers, everything. So we're working on that. The City High, what we're doing over there is finishing up the career tech area and the culinary arts. You know, that's been kind of a bone of contention over the years is we didn't have CT. You know, we took the shops out when we, when we did a lot of other things at City High. Now, they're back and it's looking pretty good. And the science room renovations are ongoing right now. That old C wing, I call it, it's the wing on the northwest part of the building, northeast part of the building, excuse me, that didn't get touched when we did our other renovations. So we're finishing that up right now. They're kind of a mess, they're all tore up, but they'll be ready to go. This is a new entrance at West High. That's that old curved wall, it stayed. There's a new patio area up on top and they painted the wall. I think it looks really cool, don't you mind? It's getting there and I'm not going to show you anymore. That's it. This is taken from...
So don't drag down the elements.
This probably looks good on the outside, the brick and glass, the front entrance. It looks really sharp. I took, put this picture in for one reason. The clear store, what I call clear story windows, those high wall windows. We used them at Horn, we're using it Northwest, we're using them at Southeast. And whenever you put a building on the side of an existing building, getting daylight back into the existing classrooms is a challenge. So we did this at all three of those projects to do that. And that's come a long way since that picture, but that happens to be the sixth classroom addition at Horn that you're looking at. But we did the same thing at the other schools and it's really a neat feature that we use to get that daylight in. And this isn't done, the ceiling tiles are in, but if you look at the lower half, that's the new culinary arts at City High. And there's a lot of steel there and stainless steel. It's coming along as of today, still hadn't put the tile in, but it's, it's really close to being done. I really think they'll be happy there. If you think about the whole, the old home ec department up on the third floor at City High and where we've come to this, it's, it's amazing. So other projects, I know you're interested in the middle school additions where we're doing art, new art and science rooms at all three of those. We're doing the general and special ed classrooms at all three. We're doing healthy kids clinics at all three. And by that I mean clinics that have exterior entrances. You don't have to go through the building to get to the clinic. So parents can bring students in or whoever without entering the building and in those clinics, which I think was a very desirable thing. At Southeast, we're adding a new band and orchestra room. I'm going to show you the band room in a second. New fitness and locker rooms in addition to what we just said. North Central, it's the kitchen and the cafeteria expansion, which they dearly needed. And then we have a kitchen expansion and cafeteria at Northwest. That's, that's the brickwork as of maybe yesterday at Southeast. It's got a really cool look to it. If you look kind of past all the stuff that's going on, both the brick and the glass, it's going to be a really nice project. I can talk later about where we're at if you want. And that's the new fitness room at Southeast. Down there, done, looks nice. It's got the right color lockers, I guess, for Southeast. Yeah, that's the band room. And it's pretty much done except for the ceiling tiles. And I walked into that a couple of weeks ago and went, wow, this is a big building. And it's, it's oversized. When you look at some of the other comparable schools, Northwest and Southeast have really nice band rooms. So wanted to show you that. That is the south face of Northwest. As if you were standing in the new parking lot on the south end of the building, on the east side, looking north, you look all the way down through there. They still got to finish retaining wall. And this was just taken the other day. The steps are going up to Northwest. It's pretty, looking pretty good. Now, this picture may not mean a lot to you until I point something out. But I want you to look, you see the diagonal part right here, how it's white colored? And this is gray? What that is, the terrazzo's done in the corridors at Northwest. So if you had any doubts about Northwest being done, send them away. You don't, you shouldn't, because it will be done. The floors are down, what you see is paper and plastic protecting that floor. So they really have done a nice job at Northwest. And I just want, that, I would have preferred to be able to show you the terrazzo uncovered, but it's there, okay? That's the outside of the new cafeteria expansion at North Central. Brickwork, glass, all looks good. The loading duct looks good, the kitchen's coming along. They should have that done. There's a couple of pieces that aren't going to be here. They're bringing in temporary replacements, so the kitchen will be able to functional. The cafeteria itself, there's a whole bunch of glass along that east wall. All that got bumped out and now it opens up into this new addition. So again, it's just kind of a teaser. It's really dirty and messy on the inside of some of these schools right now. So I didn't get a whole lot of interior pictures. Well, I did, but I didn't want to show them to you. This, this is a classroom at North Central and it's on the first floor. The goal is to have that first floor ready, use the temp lex. But what I want you to see is that the mechanical works in, you know, the HVAC, the electrical, the plumbing, all that's there, the walls are painted. They're getting started on the ceiling grids. So they're moving right along on that first floor. Things you don't see when you drive by that are happening on the inside. So I'm, North Central, they get that first floor ready, I'm pretty happy, okay? So what we're starting this summer, Lucas, we're building a new gym. It's one of those things that got left off, FMP 1.0. They had a really nice multipurpose room in an old gym. The multipurpose room, the ceiling's not high enough for a gym and the old gym is just old and tired, you know, too small. So we're doing that. We're adding a new special ed or ELP room, doing HVAC and storage. At West High, we're doing additional classrooms that we're starting. We're taking the library, the upper floor, that upper library, because they don't need it now, they tell me, I hope, because we're turning it out. We're filling in the stairwell and we're going to put in, it's either three or four, maybe even five new classrooms in that area up there, which negates the need for any modders over there. They're going to have all the space they need for the little programs that they had out there. So West High is going to look pretty sharp. We're just starting that, it won't be ready until next year. And then it's the CFI. The career tech classrooms are in the plan. The new boardroom and admin, I'll show you the boardroom in a second. And a storm shelter required for academic programs by the city is going to be a part of this plan. We've got 10 bids today, which means contractors are hungry. So Jeff, they want me to share the cost, but it's not, that's not bad either. Here's Lucas and that, the tan colored part at the back is the new gym. There's actually classrooms back there and Lucas was a lot like Wickham and Horn with all these pyramid roofs. We tore off one of those pyramids on the back. It's actually, they started it today or yesterday. They're tearing it down and that new gym's going into place.
So this is being constructed and their old gym will be in use for...
Oh, yes, ma'am, yeah. Yeah, this, this won't be ready until...
August of '25.
'25, yeah. This is the new boardroom we're planning for the CFI. You know, there's been issues about the ceiling's not being as tall, I've heard that from different people. But we're going to leave this, we're going to leave the metal grid up above, exposed but we're putting in all these sound baffles, sound baffles to kind of help with the noise. And I really think in the end you'll like that. Over to the left-hand side is where like the director tables would be. So you'll have patrons looking right at the board table, okay?
Staff room.
Be over on the left there, Charlie. Plenty of monitors for the staff near the director's seat. Yeah, plus committee meetings can be over there. And then there's a, there's a separate conference boardroom for private or closed sessions off to the side. This may not make a lot of sense to you, but right, those doors there are the doors that go into the new conference center. And below that patio there is where we had to put the storm shelter for the students. So the students are down at that lower level, have a safe FEMA rated shelter to get into. And on top of that will be a patio where overflow crowds can go out during conferences or you have little meetings on nice days out there, whatever. There's also an ADA ramp on the side, here on the left side. It's not in the picture, but that, that'll be the kind of the primary entrance for that conference center. So it should be a nice feature. In design right now is athletic master plan and I put on a very preliminary, okay? There's, we've gotten to the point where we've gotten a lot of our academic needs satisfied, even fine arts, because we've done that at all three middle schools. High schools have all been brought up to speed. But athletics was kind of left behind on some of this. But at, for example, at City High and West High, when I first got here in 2012, 2013, we put down turf fields. Well, here we are, folks, 12, 13 years later and that turf's got to be replaced, okay? It only has a life cycle of 10, 11 years and we've used it. So we've talked about that. We're talking about ways of making practice fields more usable at, at these facilities. We're talking about City and West. Both of them, as big as the West High campus is, it's not a very nice campus to build on. It's just, it's a goat hill, you know, in the back. The front, nobody wants to touch. I don't blame them, I mean, it's kind of sacred ground, right? It's West High. City High, yeah, Molly will tell you that. I mean, I don't want to be shot for building something out there. But at City High, it's even worse, it's so landlocked. But what's going to help at City High is Mercer Park. And we can move baseball and softball over there, which you may have not heard about softball, with those two and do a 20-8e with those folks and spend some money making them better. That frees up some space at City High, okay? So we started talking about all these different things that we want to do. We brought in the ADs, we brought in the principals, we had architects, we had Chase, myself, Jeff and others there to talk about what can we do? What I'm about to show you are just two very preliminary ideas for both campuses that are pie in the sky stuff. I don't, I'm pretty sure we won't do all of it, but we will do some of it, okay? So this is City High and I'll use my cursor a little bit here. Right there is an existing shot put and discus area and that's existing batting cage and that's that roadway that goes behind City High, this being the front, of course. So right here in the soccer field, when that was built, it's a turf field, but it was built, it's substandard in terms of regulation and being able to have real competition there. Plus it needs to be replaced. So when we did this upper field, we put a set of bleachers here, they sit there, they're still there, which would accommodate a wider field to make that a more competition, regulation type field. Plus that turf field is used by a lot of different people. Over, over here on the Bates Field, they're happy with the grass. The grass is pretty cool, except that it, over the years, the drainage issues are there. The track has drainage issues, the surface has drainage issues. We need to look at, we're not, we're not going to change the configuration of that. A new, a new track would be wider and not as long. It'd be squished, you know, compared to this.
Well, it's one of the historical pieces of the city. The track would be shorter and wider, but it would actually be closer to a regulation high school. And so it's, this is the track that's...
We're not going to change it.
It's not, it's not, yeah, but we're not. We talked to them and they, they want to keep it this way. But it is, it's, so it's a unique track in the state of Iowa, given the history of Bates Field in general.
You're also restricted by that, whoop, by that bleacher right there. Those are brand new bleachers since I've been here. And they're up pretty tight to the bank and First Avenue, unless we're willing to move First Avenue. No, it's going to work. So anyway, but we need to fix the drainage. We could ask.
I said at the rate of their, their construction's moving at this rate.
Or on court. Anyway, so that, and we looked at a, a potential of moving shot put and discus down to this, that's... Before I move on, there's, through that park, that kind of parking area right, come on, Dwayne. Right there. You got Kim's face. We're talking about redoing some of that traffic through there and that red building there, red roof, as if we do athletic field houses, which we can talk more about later. But I wanted to make sure that there was a place to do it, okay? You can't just talk about it if there's nowhere to build. That's the old softball field and it will fit, okay? So then if we move on to the next layout, that's just an optional one where they talk, where maybe up on the upper field, we put more turf so that more teams could practice, the band could practice, whatever.
Well, the soccer field would become natural turf too at that point.
So those are some of the improvements we can make there. And if we do that, we're going to have to move shot and discus down to below Bates Field. That's another idea. Another little feature that you might notice there is that to the right of the, of the athletic field house, you'll see another small red roof. We're talking about creating more of a formal ticket entrance, like at Liberty Hall, you know, something like that, where you come through a gate so you can control the crowds. So let's see, huh? This is West High. It's kind of backwards, but the main building is to the left. I did it so I could make, fit the picture on the screen. So you see the new tennis courts and what you also will notice is that baseball's in a different place. And it's moving from up there where the red roof is, where that field house could go, down to below. Now, one of my biggest gripes with West High since I've been here is that softball's in a hole. There's water, and when it rains, it floods. It's just not a good place. I mean, if we're treating our athletes fairly, that's not a good, that's not an ideal situation. So the thought was, if you go out here, like, if you know where the, I know where Molly knows where the plateau is on the west side of the campus, it's up high, right? The only thing I can figure is when they built the damn school, they piled all the extra dirt up and created a plateau. Well, it didn't serve anybody any purpose. And if you, somebody may remember, when we built Liberty, we actually hauled like 300 loads of dirt down into that far lower, that far right-hand corner in this drawing and raised that up for a practice field. We used all that extra dirt and moved it down there. But there's still that plateau. So the idea is lower the plateau, raise the softball and make that a nice level surface, as level as you can out there, given the conditions. Raise softball and relocate baseball and give them a nice field because their turf is bad. There's, there's all kinds of erosion things that have gone over the years up there. That also is a good place for a field house if we build it. Because then the band, who likes to practice on the baseball field today and tears it up and drives band back there crazy, would have an indoor place to practice during the season as close to the whole band orchestra music area, okay? So that's there. We wouldn't touch soccer, soccer is beautiful. I mean, it's one of the best soccer fields in the country, if you ask me. Sandcap, turf soccer fields are expensive, but also very practical. So the football field, the turf is going bad, not only with age, but when we had all that rain, a couple, it's been three years ago?
About eight.
No. Yeah, it's getting old fast. Kinnick Stadium had the same problem. The turf, the water actually raised the turf and the carpet, whatever you want to call it, and that happened at West High. So for a lot of reasons, that needs to be fixed. But you know, when we do that, it's at a minimum 750, up to $1 million to replace the turf. But we knew that when we laid it down. And we, we planned for it. So that's the only thing that would happen on the football field. The shot put and discus areas are below the football field in this drawing, they would stay. But the nice improvement here, and maybe it shows up more in the next drawing, is that lower right-hand corner could be used not only for football practice, it could be used as overflow for soccer, it could be used as a baseball field for the freshman and sophomore teams when they're practicing. They'd have a place to practice while the varsity teams are playing. That situation exists at Mercer, where they can, both teams can play. This would be kind of on an equal footing. At Liberty, they go to that, that Walt campus that's south of Liberty there. A few, what's the name of that place?
Penn Meadows.
Penn Meadows. So they have a place. One, they go up by Penn Elementary, they play up there. So anyway, this would put in, this would create a new softball, baseball complex, which would be kind of at a level with a parking lot if you lower that plateau. So those are the kinds of things. We're going to share these with the principals and ADs on Thursday. So we'll get their input. They haven't seen these. It's going to be sent out tomorrow, it's only a way to talk to this meeting. So they're going to send them out. So that's kind of what's in the athletic master plan. Preschool still on our radar. What a perfect opportunity. We vacated all the sixth grade rooms, right? You could convert some of those sixth grade rooms or you could just move the second through, first through fifth grade and move them up into those rooms and take the younger primary grade classes and create some preschool rooms, okay? You know, because sometimes in these buildings, a lot of times, sixth grade's one and primary, preschool another. So why not just move some people around and make it work? Now, so you have space now if you don't need the extra space for enrollment. Or you could build additions, but there's money in the budget that I'm sure we'll need to adjust if we do everything we want to do. But it's time, it's time to get the preschool rooms done. State standards we have to meet. I found a really colorful picture. I thought that's one thing that we need to really emphasize is a lot, they're really busy rooms and that's okay, right? It can't just be white with gray carpet. So that's a typical room. The other thing that's in the works, and I'm going to let Chase chime in here, is that we've been in discussions for quite a while now about the Corvill pool and what to do with it and all the things it needs to have. The only point I made with Chase and others is if you want to renovate and add on, great. But if it's more than two-thirds of the cost of building a new facility, why are you doing it? Build the new because you're throwing good money after bad. You're not going to get the same life cycle that you will on those older buildings by upgrading them as you will if you build a new one. So having that said, Chase has been at a lot of their meetings, you want to talk a little about it?
Sure. So the district entered its first agreement with the city of Corvill back in 1986 when they added the pool to the rec center. And so that's when our partnership really started. We have a 20-8e, very used to the pool ever since. One of the things we started talking about when we opened Liberty was as we added sports that Liberty would transition and have all of their own teams across all the major sports that we play. Swimming is the only one, is swimming and diving, we only see that? Yes. Bowling was there too. Swimming's the only one left where we still swim combined, both Liberty and West. And the reason is, is we don't have the practice space to do that. Corvill's decided they want to move forward with renovating their rec center and we've kind of collaborated with them over a series of meetings about potentially going in to build a new auditorium. We brought a contract to share the design costs with the boards several months ago. Last month, last week, they issued a couple of different drawings to get community input on the two...
This one's a renovate?
Yeah, two, two proposals. First, and I've got the boards over there too, you can take a chance to look at later. But first, their renovation, you see the pool up there at the top? One of the big pieces from where we're concerned is that there'd be two bodies of water. We'd be primarily funding the competition pool, which is there on the right. But we'd also have access to the pool that is labeled number two to give us more lanes to practice in so that practices could continue when we had meets going on. And we think a lot about our two high schools, but remember, we also have junior highs that have swim teams too. And so it's actually four of our teams that practice there, not two. And that second body of water really allows us to keep our junior high feeder programs going, especially when the high school meets are going on as well. This is the new facility and, you know, I do listen to Dwayne. And so one of the things that I've kind of parroted and championed at the meetings is with the cost relatively the same for both, you know, you, my preference would be you build new or renovate. And what they've said back is, well, the pool's going to be new regardless. And I'm like, okay, well, that still doesn't mean you shouldn't build new. But we will have a new pool area in either one of the pieces. Both pools call for what I think they call a square. So the competition pool would be the pool labeled number three. It's eight lanes, one direction, but then the lanes the other direction are a little bit more narrow. Oh, you have 10 lanes. So we can get more practice time in the water. And so it allows us to, to better stack practices, to have more, more time for our students in the pool. The other thing that this will do, Dwayne, did you just put the bottom floors or should put the top floors? So this would be the top floor, 17, those are bleachers. If you've been to any of the venues around, Lynn Mar is the closest one of the newest. Beautiful bleacher sections up above for spectators to sit. We don't have that in the current facility right now. So those are kind of the concepts that they're looking at. Right now, our contribution or what is proposed is about $17 million. Depending on the design that the city goes with, with our input, they want our opinion, it's sitting in that 53 to 55 million dollars. So we'd have about responsibility for about a third of it, given all that kind of going to fund the, the competition pool. If you do any research, you will see that there are districts out there that are building their own auditoriums for 21 to 25 million dollars. And so a question we might get in the community is, well, why are you spending $17 million to contribute to a collaboration with the municipality if you could build your own for about $4 million more? The answer is, we don't own a pool if, if we spend 17 and collaborate with the city of Corvill. And I think everyone on the table will tell you that our preference would be not to own a pool for a variety of reasons. And so doing the collaboration... And so, doing the collaboration is a good, uh, is a good move for us from a variety perspective, if it's a decision you want to make about where we spend those dollars. And again, we're not committed to that construction right now. We're still just in that design phase. And so, I'll let Dwayne finish then with any answers.
I had responsibility for seven swimming pools in Des Moines. Believe me, if you don't have to own it, don't own it. I mean, it's a continual, every year we had to take one pool down and do a complete maintenance. So, they're on that seven-year life cycle. It's, it's a pretty expensive venture. We're gonna keep doing safety, security, technologies, it's still in the works. Jeff tells me we got four new vehicles.
Three.
Three today, or yesterday?
Last week.
Last week. And so, we've got that to work on, transportation infrastructure. Ben's gonna keep working on playgrounds and outdoor classrooms. We still have some HVAC work to do. Still would like to do the physical plan, nutrition services, kind of outgrown that. We are currently very close to closing the deal on Southwest Plan for Southwest Elementary with the Carson's Farm. Looking in the future, maybe on the east side, we may need another one. And we're very actively removing portables and selling them. And Blith Fang, in our office, manages that. She's a happy camper because they're going, we're getting rid of them. So, that, five thirty-one.
Good job.
How's that, Ruffina? I drug it out, thirty seconds.
Okay. We'll open it up for questions. Go ahead.
Three areas, Dwayne, one that we talked about earlier. We're building restrooms in this facility. Are we making accommodations for trans youth in other?
Yeah, the single-stall bathrooms is really what we're trying to do there, Charlie. Make sure, I think, when we can take advantage of locations, you know, oftentimes, those single-stall bathrooms would be next to, you know, more of those probably large spaces in our facilities. And so, where we can, definitely try to build those into the plan to have more of those single-stall restrooms available.
I'm assuming there's support from the board for including the future of our overall.
Yes.
It's also an issue, I, I remember being with my mom, of young kids, taking my kids to swimming lessons at the Coroville. There is no place to take your opposite sex child to, um, to change. There, there's no family changing room there, and it's always an awkward situation, so these single-stall restrooms would be more for change.
And I talked to them specifically about that, because it had come up at our last meeting. They said they were looking, making sure as they get to the details, adding other single-stall or the family-style restrooms to have those available.
Second area, uh, in regard to fulfilling our Connet Action Plan goals, we have a goal of converting gas heat to electric heat, whenever possible. And I assume we're following that as we.
Yes, we are. We were talking today, the, after, hopefully in about a year and a half, it'll be the E.S.C., Man, and the C.F.I. will be the only three buildings that have gas heat. And as our rooftop units that have the gas makeup, as they start to go bad, like, Southeast still has one on top. As they start to go bad, we'll start replacing them with electric. And we, we just, like Dwayne said, we just purchased our three, our first three E.V. vehicles. And so, we're, we're in the process of trying to do everything we can. Yep.
I, I got you, but I've been looking at the photo of the city high kitchen area, food service area.
Yeah.
But I think there was a gas stove there, is that correct? And is there a way to change that?
That's how, if you're training someone to be a chef, you train on gas.
So, that has to be part of the training?
Yes.
I would say.
I think they'd prefer it.
We actually went through that process. We talked, and, and, so, yeah. So, they, they said they cannot, this time, there's no electric compliance out there.
Okay, clear. And then, for the auditorium, uh, how does share maintenance cost if we have a pool, though, facilities, public pool?
Sure. So, we have, uh, we entered a twenty-eight E agreement. We have one in place right now. And there's a breakdown, is it the third item, or about thirty percent?
That's thirty percent, yep.
Of, of the different costs we pay for maintenance and lifeguards, things like that. Right now, it's just under ten thousand dollars a month, is what the twenty-eight E says with Coroville. So, that's our, you know, so our annual is one hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty is what we pay.
Does it count for the general fund, or is there a whole?
Uh, probably has to come from the general fund. We've been paying it from the general fund, but I need to explore whether we'd have any option to pay a portion of it out of capital.
Probably.
Yeah, any of the, yeah, save or capital.
Staffing, it's.
Yeah.
Will that number change at all, or not change?
I guess, yeah, that'd be part of what we work out with Coroville, right, is what that percentage is now.
Director Ramey, under the current build over there, we're not funding the lazy river or water slide or children's play area.
No.
Director, I just want the public to know that.
Yeah, no. And I know you, and I appreciate you sending that question before. So, no, we're not funding that, but I think that goes back to the twenty-eight E, where seventeen million dollars is a, is a significant investment by the district. And so, I think whatever we write up in terms of twenty-eight E, we want to make sure that the district in some capacity has access to things potentially beyond just the competition pool. But no, in terms of costs, the, the money we're contributing will go to the big competition pool, the bleachers, the mechanical that goes underneath it. I mean, the cost of that body of water is, is extensive.
What else do we currently use at the Coroville rec center? Just the pool, or?
Yeah, just the pool.
So, number one is a leisure pool. Is that something that's also a cool-down area for our?
No, it's like a zero entry, and so, um, that, uh, that, you know, circle up in the, in the top left is kind of a lazy river. And then, uh, twenty is a hot tub, there's a slide, and then two is that lap pool. There's actually a glass kind of partition between the pools, two and three, to kind of separate those areas as well.
So, the, I guess, kind of elephant that we have here is that FMP two-point L, we now have about, what, eighty-nine left over from the elementary buildings. Looks like there's thirty-six sitting inside, in strategic reserve, in case.
Yeah, I'll address that one, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I think what you might have picked up was the, the number at the bottom line of the spreadsheet.
Oh, I, I took FMP one-point, two-point-one and two-point-two and put all the numbers.
Okay, well, there's not eighty million, let's put it that way. There is thirty-six in a reserve that we, that goes up and down.
Oh, now, this is to my point, though, that we had eighty million, and so, we have seventeen potential for Coroville, right? And then eighteen potential for the athletic fieldhouses. What kind of research went into picking ideas of what to do with the money that is not going to elementary schools? Because I know, I know a lot of people voted because, hey, let's extend all these things so we can build more elementary buildings. I heard that from the farmer's markets all last summer.
So, we had done.
So, I'm just trying to figure out what.
In my tenure here, we've done two.
Yeah.
Pre-extensive research or assessment projects, what I call them assessments. So, we did one of every building in the district for both educational needs, physical needs, and site needs. Okay, for every building. Large program done in December, January of twenty-twelve into twenty-thirteen. Since that time, we did a second facility assessment for just athletic fields, okay? So, every time we go to do an athletic project, we look at that assessment and say, what was identified back then? And that was based against other school districts around the country, kind of standards. We had professionals doing both. So, that's how we identified the needs, both building-wise, athletic-wise. So, we've kind of referred to that numerous times.
Has there been any discussion with the community?
Well, that's what I was gonna say, Director Lingo, is that, you know, some of this is informed by, you know, input we hear from staff and leadership, you know, staff members as well, and then where there's pressure in those spaces. You know, here, not too long ago, we talked about trying to make sure, you know, we had more accessible gym space, you know? And obviously, in the winter, you know, we get high pressure on gym spaces. In the nicer seasons, we get high pressure on those outdoor spaces. This issue with the band at West High and the baseball team at West High has been going on for years, you know, about practicing on the, Molly knows. I mean, there are significant arguments about the band practicing on the baseball field, what happens to the baseball field, and how we turn that around for the, for the baseball season the next spring. And so, there is, I would say, a significant amount of, you know, feedback that's also been gathered about trying to inform some of this, and just the pressure on those existing spaces to do that. But Dwayne's right, I mean, you know, the, the reason for some of the suggestions, go back to that original facility, you know, need assessment. But then what we continue to hear from staff and community about, okay, where do we have significant space or not? And then knowing that we've addressed fine arts and, and music in some of those first facility plans, where we didn't do a lot on the athletics end outside of, you look at the, obviously, the new beautiful space at City High, and what we were able to do with the full suite of activities at Liberty High, you know, opening a new high school. We really feel like that, that music, fine arts, was addressed in those facility plans. And, um, you know, if we were gonna, that, that's where this conversation starts, right? Is if we were gonna put some of those dollars to use now, this was probably the thing that wasn't accomplished in those first facility plans.
So, what would you and the team say, if you're at the, if you decide to opt down at the farmer's market with me in July? Because this will hit the airways, I'm sure, throughout the district. And someone comes up and tells me, uh, with the athletic fieldhouses and the Coroville rec center, the total of FMP is gonna be forty-eight point five million dollars towards athletics in some way, shape, or form. And then they say, what about the arts? Because I heard it all last summer with, you know, what was going on at City and the city expansion. And I defended it, and I will continue to defend that spending, but I want, just want to get an idea of what.
Well, I think I'd respond with some of what I just shared, right? I mean, that we addressed those spaces, I mean, we just talked tonight about music and or, or band orchestra spaces in our existing buildings. I mean, the fine arts expansion at City High happened before even the FMP, right? I mean, that's where we lost C.T.E. classrooms, was the whole fine arts expansion there. And so, I think sometimes the conversation for folks is just gonna require, you know, reminding them of the work that we've done, right? Because we've been in this facility process for a long time now, and just because this is the newest thing, doesn't mean we didn't address another area. It just means it happened here, and now it's somebody else's turn. And so, I think just showing that number about what we're spending most recently would be, you know, short-sighted. I think I would want to go back and show them, okay, well, here's all the money we spent on those fine arts additions in those earlier FMP iterations, and even before the FMP.
Yes, I can brag just a little bit.
Yeah.
We did this fine arts at City High when I first got here. West High was already done. They had a nice music band room addition out there. Liberty High stayed the art. But the real progress has been made at the three middle schools. Because they're all getting new art rooms, they all got new band rooms and orchestra rooms and music rooms. And when you see the ones in Southeast, and if you haven't been to Northwest, go there, because we converted the old gym, they, we've done a really remarkable job with the fine arts at all our secondary schools. So, I mean, that's the easy answer, but if I, and as Matt stated, the first project I got put on was that, was City High. When I got here, and it already started, but what a beautiful music and orchestra and band addition that is. And we've improved the art rooms at City High as well. So, we've made real progress at all the schools in the fine arts.
And we wait till the end. I mean, we're at the end of FMP two-point O. We're gonna be in years fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen of our facility master plan upgrades. And now, we're finally tackling our outdoor athletic spaces, which we know are a critical part for a lot of our students in participation and their vitrification through middle school and high school. And to finish Matt's point, that those dollars you're talking about are part of that larger six-hundred-and-thirty-three or thirty-four million dollars.
Close to seven.
On facility upgrades. And so, we're, we're talking about even with the, the athletic master plans, spending somewhere about seven or eight percent on, on athletics. And so, I get when I look in the vacuum one, and it's easy to pinpoint those things. I think it is part of a larger story, and one that shows that we prioritized education and instruction and the arts before we prioritize some of these pieces on, on athletics. And I think there's a good story to tell there on it, but you're right, we're gonna get those questions. And it's, what have you done for me lately, or what's that shiny thing out there now? And so, that's what people are gonna see. But I'm confident in, in the story that we're able to tell, and how we've kind of married all these things together as, as we've moved it forward over the last decade and a half.
So, what is athletic fieldhouse?
Yeah, no, it's a good question. Yeah, I mean.
It's different things for different people.
Yeah.
I've done a lot of research. I checked on architects, you know, that kind of thing. And what we're looking at is an indoor practice facility. It can be used by multi-teams, it can be used by band, it can be used by cheerleaders, it can be used by any extracurricular activity that needs space. You could open it up to the community if you chose to, but would provide a multifunctional space with a turf surface. So, it's easy to take care of, and by turf, I mean artificial turf. And a very simple building, one that would have, that would last. There are some in the area that we, Band Notice is what that, Mid Prairie has one, Regina has one, West Branch has one, Algonah, Mason City, and the list goes on and on. It's a very popular option. And one, one of the things that drove it, is one thing that Matt just said, is that we don't have enough practice space. We don't have enough basketball, some, some fieldhouses have basketball courts. We're not playing on that. But it's the space to practice when you have freshmen, sophomore, varsity teams, and whatever sport, track.
Well, it's even beyond that. It's that, you know, our sports never shut down. Right? I mean, basically, kids are practicing all year, right? Whether, I mean, if you're in basketball, you're playing basketball year-round. If you're in a summer sport, you're gonna continue to hit and throw, right? I mean, if you play softball or baseball. And so, that's part of the challenge too, is like, the pressure never really leaves, you know, from those kids wanting to get together, or coaches when they're in their window, you know, working with them, certainly.
And those, and those outdoor sports, when it's raining or it's seasonal, it's cold.
Yeah.
It's pretty awkward to practice soccer and.
Pretty difficult, yeah.
My thing is that the building itself be durable, that the walls be concrete, not tin. So, you could do whatever you want.
Not gonna build a storm shelter area?
No.
Thank you.
With concrete walls, tildubs.
Appreciate that you've done a lot of the music upgrades in the secondary schools. But one question I get a lot, and I, my kids don't go to City, but the question is about Opstead. It's, it's old, it's small, um, are there any plans to upgrade that?
Two things, well, three things. One, we're doing the HVAC as we speak. The, all those seats have been taken out. They're all being reupholstered, they're all in.
No, they're not.
Oh, that's right. We're doing the floor.
We're redoing all the floor and throughout the whole thing. Opstead, you have to remember, once they had the fire there, and they, and they ripped the original ceiling out, it has some of the best sound qualities in the Midwest. I mean, that's talking Chicago downtown theaters and that. So, as far as doing anything to the, the auditorium itself, there's not a plan. It's just the upgrades. And we're looking at upgrading the lighting right now, probably the issue with the pebble project, so.
I've heard stuff, questions about the sound system.
The sound system is.
Is that part of the lighting and sound system?
No, the sound system will be mixed on the list. And actually, we've had, we found a company out of Kansas that comes in and works on it.
And we upgrade the curtains every so often, and all the gear. We have safety inspections. And one thing we did do that most, everybody didn't notice or wouldn't notice, is we actually took the wall out, the back of the stage at City High. We removed the wall, put in a steel beam, and created a, a stage scene room for transition, for working on scenery and things like that, back and forth behind the, behind the stage at City High. So, we've done a lot of things there to make it better. But I always do.
I would, you know, it's, to one of the points Matt made, and Director Lingo, what you asked about where we're hearing this. We're really trying to be responsive to our principals and what we're hearing from the schools. And, you know, they ask us to start in certain places. Mitch was very adamant that we do some stuff with their music rooms as, in this, in this latest round. But now, we're hearing about the need to update some of their other athletic facilities. And we know it's not college, and I'm, I'm one of the big proponents of it. I don't like that we cut, and it's high school and everything, she gets to do everything else. But then they throw back with the new rules from the state. It's all about competition. And we've talked a lot about how we have to market ourselves and with open enrollment. And that's what we're hearing from our principals, is we have to continue to showcase the attributes of our schools inside and outside of the classrooms, because we're in need to attract students. And so, we're trying to balance the needs that we know we need to do as a district, with also what our principals are giving us feedback from what they're hearing from. from their families, from their students, and where they think their pressing needs are. Well, and what they see when they go to other districts, right? I think that's the other thing, kind of in that laundry list. Like, when you go to another district, Milwaukee and Ankeny, and they see what they're competing against in some of those areas, I think that they're just like, could we at least get a field house? You know, could we at least get an indoor practice space? And so, that's some of the pushback we hear about why they feel urgency on those things, knowing that that choice option's very real now. And Dwayne listed some of the communities around us, right, that are our real competitors. And so, so that is an element of it too. Um, but we wouldn't have brought it to you if we didn't think it was legitimate, right, or a need.
Yeah. And I guess the one thing that I would just want to emphasize that as we let, let's say, we go through with some of these plans, with sports especially, that we emphasize an equity component within our club teams that are using our facilities. Because, because that's like a big, so here's that metaphor, club sports.
Oh.
That don't have access to those facilities because they don't have access to club sports.
But I don't mean a squash conversation, but we need to probably put a hand in this point so we can adjourn and get ready for our regular meeting.
Can I? I know, I know, because I didn't say it earlier. So, except that we're gonna talk about a little bit. But on the auditorium, just so the board is not caught off guard. The next steps on that is the core team's gonna take feedback they've gotten from the, uh, community and from various sources and make and tell us the recommendation of whether it's gonna be new or renovation. The city of Coroville is planning to take that to their board for discussion at their August 13th meeting. Um, and so, you know, we, we can have another discussion here. They do not have a timeline for when they would actually start on it. They don't have their funding.
I know.
They don't have their funding figured out on it yet. So, that's still up in the air for them. But, go ahead.
Maybe we can put sort of a follow-up to that on the July 23rd work session.
Yeah. And I just didn't want you all to be caught off guard. We sought to do some approvals on our side. So, if you're hearing anything out of Coroville, that doesn't mean that we are committed, but they are gonna move.